Is something very typical in small businesses. And I'm essentially the person that goes out and raises the money. I don't have the exact numbers, but approximately in the 12 years I've been here, we've raised somewhere around $25 million. So I guess that's the other thing too. It's I'm thoroughly convinced that I will be paid back. That's the only reason I gave the money. But then the thing is, do we pay us back or do we save the engine house from collapse? Do we pay us back or do we take care of locomotive 93 so we have a season?
You know, I still think that you can squeeze something out every month.
Trust me.
You're talking this month going back 12 years.
Yes, I know that. I'm fully aware of that. Each, each month, each, each day down there is always a cycle.
But we, we are guaranteed it's not going to get any higher than this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I have, yeah, I have a question. We, what was our, our total debt after the Olympics?
I have to go back and look. It was rather sizable and there was no cash on hand. The other thing, again, I'm doing this from memory. The annual budget of the foundation in 2002 was about $180,000 a year. So essentially we've gone from $180,000 a year to approximately $900,000 a year. So, and again, unlike the city of Ely, we come up with the budget. I can give you a budget, but the budget is basically my imagination. Because the only money I can count on in the course of the year is our room tax revenue, which is just over $100,000. So on that $900,000 budget, I have to go out and raise that other $800,000. And so there is absolutely no guarantee that any one year I can ever raise that money. I got a track record of doing it for 12 years, so.
You also got a track record of doing a fabulous job of collecting. So, you know, my concern isn't that you've done something wrong. My concern is to, to get you paid back.
Oh, and if, if we're going to get paid back, my, the first law I'd like to do is to guarantee under $95,000 I've prepared the crown grasses.
Right.
So.
See, that's the, that's the thing a lot of people doesn't know. It's not really $72,000. It's about $168,000 we owe you.
Yeah. But the thing is, it's, you know, I'm not coming to your house and knocking on the door and saying, hey.
Not yet.
So, in, in November, when you gave us a financial report, it looked very similar to what you've given us this month. And you listed long-term liabilities and then total liabilities, which in November were $595,000. You didn't list it this month. What, what is the difference? What comprises the balance between long-term liabilities and the total liabilities?
I, I have to pull up the, the balance sheet. I don't have that with me. But basically, we have short-term liabilities and long-term liabilities. And the, the, the short-term liabilities were the, you know, accrued vacation that hasn't been taken.
The count's payable.
Payable, yes, exactly.
Well, my motivation here, Mark, is that I'm, I was there when we got 93 ready for the Olympics. And I know what that's going to cost to do another 1472. And 40 is right behind it.
Oh, yes.
And you've, you've indicated to us that those numbers are big.
Oh, absolutely.
A million dollars for 40.
Oh, yes.
So we need to, to get our current debt under control and, and start putting money away to do those budgets.
Absolutely. Now, we just had the challenge grant, okay? For every dollar we raised in December or up to $25,000, First National Bank would match that. You have a concern about our finances. Not to put you on the spot, but did you kick in anything?
I kicked in plenty of years' money.
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't add.
Well, what we need to do is, is start getting ahead of this debt.
And we are starting to get ahead.
The, the auditors have made this a point.
And if you go back through every one of our audits, that point is there every audit. It's as simple as that. What we are attempting to do is run a major industrial complex. Make no mistake about it, is a major industrial complex with 70 buildings and structures, our own water system, our own power system, 30 miles of track, two signals, and we're trying to do that on a budget of $100,000 a year. Essentially, that's the only money we have guaranteed. So what we've been able to do in the past is, when something's going to get paid, Joan and I were fortunate enough to be able to kick in to make sure it happens. So, but now you've said you don't want us to do that. But at the same time, you said that, you haven't said, how are we going to fix the problem? How are we going to find that pool of money? Now again, we've raised tens of millions of dollars. So in the future, we will raise tens of millions of dollars to keep the place going. We have a track record of doing it.
All right. Well, I appreciate it, Mark. Like I said, I know you're doing a fine job, and I just wanted to put you kind of towards a little further to the list.
Yeah.
Here's my concern with respect to this, Mark.
Okay.
I was cross-examining somebody the other day, and their comment back to me was, Mr. Sears, you're a man of many years. I'm sure he intended that as an insult, but it was not. It happens to be true. And in the course of my law practice, the one thing I've discovered over the years is that sometimes people go to heaven unexpectedly.
Yes.
I give all non-lawyers the benefit of the doubt about where they're going to go when they die. And so assuming, that God forbid, something happens and you go to heaven and Joan goes to heaven, my concern is that this debt is not just a historic foundation debt. This debt is a city of Ely debt, and that means everybody sitting in the audience has a piece of this debt.
Well, if, if I may.
It's not, it's not a foundation debt.
Sure.
Because when your heirs come forward, they're going to sue the city to collect not just the 72, but the 95. They're entitled to it. And some judge is going to say to the city of Ely, we're the only ones with money. Pay this, okay? So I think that what we need to do is come up with a way to pay this down, and I don't care whose pocket it comes out of. But I don't think we can allow this to continue because, as George I'm sure will remind us, who's responsible for the assets of the city, George? The mayor?
Right, and he's not doing anything.
I know. And so my concern, and he's right, okay? So my concern is that we need to get some way to pay this debt, and I don't care whose pocket it comes out of, because the council and the trustees are ultimately on the hook for this debt. So we're going to have to figure out what some city fund or somewhere or other to pay Mark back, because this needs to get paid. I mean, it was an audit issue, and it's going to continue to be an audit issue, and I'm sure it's a concern for every citizen. So we need to figure out how to pay this. That's my two cents, because it's a legal issue. It's not just a matter of, you know, Mark's done a great thing. There's no question Mark's done a great thing. My concern is how are we going to get him paid? We need to come up with a schedule to pay this back. And it's pretty easy for somebody to sit down and say, at X number of dollars a month, we can have this paid off in five years or four years. We need to get that in place. Okay? So that's my, my two cents. Sorry, sorry.
In the short version, though, to get the citizens of Ely off the hook is, that's why they're, the management board is talking about the key man insurance. So if I should go to the pearly gates unexpectedly, so keep your fingers crossed until the next management board meeting, then that debt is paid off. And more importantly, as part of that key man policy, is that there's a pool of money to keep the day-to-day operation of the place going until they can find another executive director. So that sort of takes care of the, the short time.
Here, here's the problem with that. In order to purchase insurance on somebody and have it not treated as income, the person buying the insurance has to have an insurable interest in the individual. Otherwise, the IRS treats it as, as income to the recipient. And so in order to make sure that that isn't a burden on your family, what we need to do is have a payment program to pay this back. If we want to buy a life insurance, in addition to that, the notes and the payment program will show that we have an insurable interest in you and your family's not on the hook for the life insurance. A lot of people don't know that. I practiced in the insurance law area for years, so it's something we, we need to, we need to get this written down. We need to get a note. We need to get a repayment schedule. I don't care where the money comes from. Ultimately, it comes from them. So that's what we need to get squared away, at least in my view.
Well, let's leave this on the gentleman's meeting and come up with a solution by the next meeting.
I'd like to correct your last statement. It doesn't ultimately just come from them. Because if you look.
Oh, the debt is their debt.
The debt, debt is their debt.
The debt is their debt.
The debt does not necessarily mean that it's going to, the repayment of that debt comes from the citizens of Ely. If you take a look at, again, the amount of money that the foundation raises to invest in that, that does not come from the city of Ely.
Worst-case scenario.
Pardon?
Worst-case scenario, it would come from that.
They're on the hook.
Yes, unless of course.
You get the insurance.
Well, basically, the railroad, railroad is a city of Ely asset. The Board of Trustees runs the railroad foundation. The management board manages it. But basically, it's back to the city of Ely's property. So let's move on to number four. Trustee Hanson, discussion for possible action, consideration of direct CD, clerk, treasurer, Roman, to look into bringing the vat of northern railroad financial management into City Hall. Sam?
Mark, I'm sure this has not been a pleasant conversation that you've had here. And it wasn't last meeting and the meeting before. And this meeting, or this, this issue keeps coming up. And as what term of derbage is said is very true. Ultimately, we are the ones that are on the hook, but obviously, I think it would be a big advantage for you not to have to worry about the finances that are going on here in the railroad. And so for the city, who's ultimately responsible, to be able to manage those finances only makes sense. And I understand and I appreciate the fact that you can't really forecast a budget, that you cast the railroad in the light of an organization that is comparable to any other management organization out there. But I don't know of any other management organization out there whose board of directors would sit still if their CFO or CEO told them that the entire budget process is locked up inside there and not anywhere on paper.
Oh, no, we have a paper budget. Oh, I can give you a paper budget. It isn't worth the paper it's printed on. Because again, the budget comes from my vivid imagination of how much money I think I can raise in any one year. I got $100,000 that I can count on.
And that's all fine and good, but that's not standard business practice. It's not even standard government practice.
Welcome to my, this is standard nonprofit practice.
Well, the other part that we're concerned with too is that, as the audit said, we're getting funds in from grants, which are not going for those purposes, they're going for other purposes. And a lot of grant holders, when they find those things out, are going to cut off.
Let me make one thing perfectly clear. All of those grants, all of that money is expended for the item the grant was originally intended for.
But not when it comes in. And that's a problem with a lot of people who issue grants. We've heard this concern raised over and over again in the community, that if they get word that this money's going for something else before it eventually gets to where it's going, then it's going to be cut off, which is.
Actually, we talked to all of our granters a whole bit, because one of the last things we want is our credibility to go from 100 to zero. Again, what I do is go out and raise quite literally hundreds of thousands of dollars each and every year.
I hate to tell you this, but among some members of this community, credibility has slipped from 100 because of this very issue. And so to avoid that, that is why this issue's on the agenda, to take the entire financial aspect of railroad.
Okay.
And put it underneath the city. Because ultimately, all of us sitting here, like has been pointed out, are responsible for it. Not the management board, it stops for us.
I think part of it, when that's gone back at least for who knows how many more audits, that the cash receipts, we talked about again, into railroad, and with the small amount of people we have, doesn't work. And it was brought up by this audit, it was last year, and the audit before, and I'm sure the other.
Have you looked at the audit for the convention center, Little People's Head Start?
We don't care. Okay, Mark, we're not talking about that. We're talking about this that we have control over, is this. And that, that does not work. And it's, and it's been an audit deficiency for years, and so we're sitting as this, Board of Trustees, looking at that. And we're saying, and me as, as one member says, this is wrong. This needs to be fixed.
Okay.
And we can fix it.
No, you can't fix it.
Yes, we can.
Okay. And the, the reason I say that is, this is nonprofit accounting. This nonprofit accounting is different than normal business accounting or municipal accounting. It is nonprofit accounting. And to tell you, to give you a quick example of how strange nonprofit accounting is, if you file your income taxes late, you get a penalty and an interest. Right? The nonprofit files its taxes late, they're charged $1,000 a day, even though we're not paying any taxes, because it's nonprofit accounting. And the other thing too is, and going back to the bylaws, it's the management board who is supposed to be managing the organization. I think it would be common courtesy to allow the management board to discuss this.
I think it's been, it's been responsible. Oh, excuse me. It's been years that this thing has been going on. The same thing that says, well, performing our test work, we observed the documentation for several pass receipts was nonexistent or incomplete. It's basically the same thing. It's not working, and it, we have, we have the control over that first. And it's not the matter of, we're sitting here making an offer, which I get from Sam's thing, is to take over this. So what would that do to the railroad? It would free up money to pay some bills, your $600,000 in behind. So you're sitting arguing with this telling us that we're wrong and you're right, but your $600,000 in the hole. So explain that to me, where? We would do things for you that you wouldn't have to expend the money on, and that's wrong. Explain that to me.
Who does your books now?
Joan does our books. And she, the books are reviewed by Robert Moore. So, and the, the fact is, our books are probably in the best shape they've been in 30 years.
Well, we still have, we still have deficiencies.
You always have deficiencies.
You should be a doctor.
Oh, excuse me. Did water bills go out that said people were behind in their water bills when they had paid their water bills? Mistakes happen, okay? Mistakes happen. The fact of the matter is, I don't see how this is going to, to help the railroad at all.
Mark, would you rather those mistakes happen on your end of things or our end of things?
Our end of things.
Well, I would rather have mistakes happen on our end of things. Because we're the ones ultimately that are responsible for it, not you. We've tried to explain that several different times and several different ways, but it's our necks on the hook, not yours.
It is my neck on the hook too, and it's the management board's neck on the hook too.
Yeah, but when your neck is gone, they're coming after ours. That's what we're concerned about. And we, as he's pointing out, it's to your advantage.
It is not to my advantage.
But we don't think it is, we do.
Okay, well, and that's just fine. Again, I think I'd come courtesy, you give the management board a chance to discuss this. Because according to the bylaws, the management board is supposed to.
How many years have you had to discuss it? You've got this deficiency down here already, and nothing's been done.
That's not true. Lots of things have been done.
And why is it still there?
It is always going to be there.
It's not.
Unless we get a large organization where we can quite literally separate everything.
Well, there are other issues as well, such as taking out a loan on your own without clearing it through us, which puts us on the hook.
What, what do you pay more for your books? I'm assuming that the city was to take that over, that would save you.
That's what this motion is about, is to authorize Jennifer to look at how much it would cost us.
An auditor and an employee.
Well, actually, we don't have to do that. We can also just take it over, and then it'll save them all the money.
It would be a gift.
But we would have to put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. The other thing that you haven't answered is, we have a difference of $800,000. I can count on $100,000. The budget's about $900,000. Where's that other $800,000 come from?
That's what we'd like to know. That's one reason why we would like to be able to offer the service and have the city be able to come up with that kind of an answer.
Well, may I say something? Mark, I appreciate everything you're doing down there. I certainly know what work is involved. You made a comment a little earlier, asking me if I donated, and I have donated, but I didn't make any loans. I gifted. And what this is, I think, is essentially a gift from the city. The city is offering to take over a duty, whether, whether you think it's the right thing to do or not.
The heart.
I'm sorry. Whether, whether you think we can fix it, whether we can fix the problem, we have a fiduciary responsibility to fix it. The auditors give their report to us as the Board of Trustees, and they've noted these problems, and we're looking for a way to solve them.
The, the fact of the matter is, if the revenue was there, we wouldn't have this problem. Again, the principal question is, where are you going to come up with the $800,000 minimum? That is minimum. Now, we have.
I think you're clouding, you're clouding the whole, the whole $800,000 with what the city of Ely is wanting to do.
Okay.
So you're, what you're saying is if, if no solution, unless it comes up with $800,000, is agreeable to you, but yet you say, and that's what you're saying to us, but you're also saying, well, Marty, why didn't you give us any money in the last campaign? That's what you said, that's what you said to them.
Well, that's what I'm confused about.
No, what we're saying is you, we're saying, we would take over the accounting of expense of the railroad and furnish that to you.
First of all, we are not the city department. I, I think that if, if you wanted to do something, then we bring Robert, we're on full-time to handle our accounting.
Now, we don't, we already have somebody to do accounting. We don't need to pay Robert Moore a penny. And that's what we're saying to you. You're wasting money.
I am not wasting money because it is nonprofit accounting. And.
Oh, my God.
No, it's serious.
You're right, we're not a city, you're not a city department, but we are ultimately still responsible as a city for it. So that's immaterial. We're still on the hook.
Then I, I agree, you're still on the hook, but.
Then shouldn't we have some control over how finances are managed? If they're on the hook?
Then.
Doesn't that make sense? I mean, I don't want to give you control of my personal finances, no offense.
But that's what, but that's how you're asking us to do. And again, this is a management board issue.
No, 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 no. There's a difference. We have, as he pointed out, a fiduciary responsibility to these people that tax pay. You don't. We do. And that's what we're concerned with.
Let's go to the bylaws of the White Pine Historical Railroad Foundation Incorporated. Article two, trustees. Section 2.01, trustees. The exercise of the power of the corporation with the right to delegate to officers and agents to performance of duties and exercise of power shall be vested and reported to trustees. So we have the power. It says right in there, we have the power. Not the management board, this Board of Trustees has the power.
Excuse me. And this is going to be the sticking point, because number one, it says delegate. And if you go to section three, general powers, the affairs of the corporation shall be managed by its management board. When you.
Mr. Sears, could you elucidate this for us, please?
May, may I finish?
No, I've asked Mr. Sears if he can identify this point.
The delegation power is clearly in the hands of the Board of Trustees. Mark's making the point that you have historically already delegated powers to the management board. And that, from memory, says the affairs of the foundation are delegated to the management board. The issue is, the word affairs isn't defined anywhere in the bylaws. It doesn't say financial affairs, it doesn't say railroad affairs, it doesn't say anything about what affairs have been delegated. There have clearly been, there has been a delegation of affairs, okay?
Now, once something is delegated, it will not be withdrawn?
No, of course.
Thank you.
But I think that a common courtesy, the discussion should be had with the management board.
You can discuss it all you want with the management board. We're discussing it here now.
Well, again.
But your management board apparently has not been discussing it with an idea of how to solve the problems we've identified, that we've been going over again, not just the last couple of meetings, but apparently in the audit the last couple of years.
Again, and see, this is why I, I don't see this working at all. When I took over as the executive director, I came from an entrepreneurial business background. The first six months on the first audit with Robert Moore, we eat at heads, because I was used to, used to corporate accounting, which is completely and totally different than fi, than nonprofit accounting. You have general accounting principles that businesses use in their accounting, correct? GAAP. Guess what? Nonprofits don't use GAAP. They have their own set of standards. And this is where Robert Moore has been a valuable resource to the foundation.
And you're saying that we don't have that expertise available to us?
No, you don't. As a person who has been in the entrepreneurial world for 25 years before I became the executive director, and it took me six months of lots of study to figure this out, it is a whole different world when you do nonprofit.
We have, we, the city has an accounting company, and I'm sure with, and it's a larger firm than Mr. Moore's. What, what, what we're saying with you is, is you, you expend money for an accountant. You expend money for people to do your, to do your daily bills, your payrolls, the payment of the bills. The city is saying, we're going to take over that. That's going to free up money for you. Back to what Bruce says, how can you pay out all this loan? So just, how much do you pay in, with accounting, with Joan and whoever else works down there in the accounting department and Robert Moore a year? How much is that a year? Just a guess.
I, I have no idea.
Oh, come on, Mark, everything else you have a guess. You don't know.
You don't know Joan's salary?
Off the top of my head, no. Actually, I, I don't know my own salary. I check every, so. Probably with the accounting and everything, it's about $35,000 to $40,000.
So we're saying to you, we'll take over that and save you $40,000 a year, and you say, we don't know, we don't, we don't know.
Essentially, what you're doing for years, we could pay you back.
Essentially, no, you can't take, you, that's.
If you're paying $40,000 a year, and we took that and instead used it to pay you back, that's not going to work.
No.
Why not?
You have yet to address how you're going.
You're already spending the money. If you're not spending it, where's it going to go?
How are you going to go from $100,000 to $900,000? Where's that?
If you're spending $40,000 a year now and you're not spending it, and you've got the money, where's it going to go then if you're not spending it? That doesn't, let me try and explain. You just said that you're spending $40,000 a year, and you have been for several years.
Yes.
And we take over that responsibility, so you're no longer spending $40,000. What I'm saying is, we can take that $40,000, and in approximately four years, it will be paid off.
And we correct one of the deficiencies that the auditors.
Number one, I think if you do that, you would wind up.
With you not having to worry about us haranguing you about this every single meeting.
Yes, you would be haranguing me about the financials every single meeting. And our financials are incredibly volatile. But the other thing is too, okay, who decides what bills get paid?
You can make your recommendations.
Those are recommendations. That's not the decision. Who decides what bills get paid?
You, how does it work now?
The Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees, just like we do with the city, bills twice a month.
Right, and if, and if there isn't revenue there, then what do you do?
We'll do what you did.
You might do, might do.
I don't know, but, you know, we'll take your input.
That's why we are also wanting to take over the finances to find out. That's why we're also wanting to take over the finances to find out how this thing's been working.
We have no idea what you're doing. That's why we wanna look at it.
Mark, we don't wanna give you the impression we don't trust you, but there are some...
You wanna kill the goose that laid the golden egg, is what essentially it's for.
No, 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 no. Mark, we don't wanna give you the impression that we don't trust you and that we don't like you. We trust you, we like you. But the way things have been going on is raising questions in the minds of a lot of people, and including some of us myself.
Okay.
It just doesn't look good. If I have to come out and say it that way, I will. It does not look good in the public. It doesn't look good in the ballot sheet. It doesn't look good there. And I also have taken accounting classes, funded accounting classes, graduate level, funded accounting classes, nonprofit organizations. I know it's very difficult, but it's not rocket science.
Oh, it's not rocket science.
And I think the city employees can wrinkle their way through it along the systems of their accountants.
You asked why we wanna do it. Because of the red flags the CPA, you know, other auditors have told us about. That's, that's why. We wanna take a problem that the auditors say we, that you have, and we wanna fix it.
Then give us the revenue to fix it, and we'll fix it.
No, Mark, we're not in the railroad business, and the big question that keeps adding up the money is, why are we in the railroad business? We're a city.
Maybe we should talk about that.
We're talking about the financial part of the railroad, not the railroad. You, you can be running the railroad.
No, 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 no. It's, 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 no, no, you can't say, you don't have the luxury of saying, "Oh, we're just gonna talk about this piece here," because it is a huge thing. And again, your, your point that you just came, maybe that is ground zero.
It is.
Yes.